Good afternoon, everyone. If I could have your attention, please. Good afternoon, everyone. It is approximately four ten P M., so we're about ten minutes behind schedule. But still welcome to the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Retreat. Again, today is Friday, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, and we will begin with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by yours truly, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by School Board Vice President Patrick Martin. Let us stand. Please bow your heads. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come together for the discussion of our past, our present, and our future of our district. We ask that you will allow anyone who is on their way here to have traveling grace. God, we thank you, dear Lord, for all conversation that will take place, that it will lead to positive and successful outcomes for our district. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now have our roll call. Present.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue. District two, Mr. Lannis. District four, Ms. Stewart. District five, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District six, Mr. Russ. District seven, Mr. Gune.
Present.
Thank you. As we begin tonight, I would like to say thank you to the Estrema High family. Of course, Ms. Langford has already left for the day, but we're thankful for the space that she's allowed us to use today. You all, all of this girly decor. This is Ms. Langford's doing, although I don't know how she knew that I would love all of this. It's beautiful. Also, we would like to say thank you to the many different support staff groups that are here that have made this experience a wonderful, a wonderful experience and very beautiful. So you all, as you see, the food that's in the room comes from our child nutrition services, so special thanks to them. Also, all of the technology that you see here, this is of Ms. Amy and her team, so thank you so much for allowing this dream to become a reality. I actually requested that we be able to use this site so that way we would be able to be a part of our school district that we represent. And so I'm just so glad and so excited and so appreciative of the opportunity to be able to host at least our retreat in the midst of our district and in the midst of our mid-city area. So thank you so much for obliging me in this and allowing us to do this. Now, as we continue, I do have a few statements to make and an exciting introduction to make as well. So once again, greetings, everyone. I am super delighted to start our board visioning retreat this evening. With great anticipation, I look forward to our reflections of our school board past, present, and future that will hopefully be the outcome of this weekend's activities. Some activities and tasks to expect include an inspirational message from our first black school board member and first black school board president, Dr. Press Robinson. We can also expect to hear where we stand in our current strategic plan shared by Mrs. Andrea Okonske. And close out this evening, letting our hair down with a painting without a twist party. So without a twist because we are not engaging in alcoholic beverages today. Reflecting a space of vision setting led by one of our district's awesome art teachers, Ms. Celeste Payne. Tomorrow, we can expect to roll our sleeves up and get into the conversations and work of hearing the state of our district by interim superintendent, Mr. Adam Smith, followed by conversations that relate to almost every aspect of the district, including hearing the voices of the boots that are truly on the ground, our teachers and our school site leaders. Once all facets have been shared, we will spend the afternoon tomorrow reflecting on where we have been, where we currently are, and where we hope to be moving forward. Through these engaging tasks, the hope is that we can begin the work towards formulating a vision for our school district that reflects the needs of the many different areas of our community. Although we may not expect to be at a final consensus of a vision statement by the end of the day tomorrow, the hope is that our robust activities and conversations will have us well on our way to fulfilling the goal in preparation to continue building on the success of our district for years to come. Now, just to share a little about our first speaker. Dr. Press Robinson has over forty years of professional administrative, technical, and teaching experience. For twenty of these years, he served as a teacher and researcher in chemistry at Southern University at Baton Rouge, where he earned the rank of full professor. He has served Southern University at Baton Rouge, also as Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs and as Interim Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs. Additionally, Dr. Robinson has served as Interim Chancellor at Southern University at New Orleans and Southern University at Shreveport and as Chancellor at Southern University at New Orleans. Dr. Robinson's experiences include research chemists assignments at Eli Lilly and Company, Mount Laboratory, General Electric Company, Los Alamos Scientific Laboratory, and Dow Chemical Company. He also served for more than fifteen years as Chief Administrative Officer and Project Manager for a consulting engineering firm. Presently retired as Chancellor of Southern University at New Orleans, Dr. Robinson was active on the political scene as a twenty-two-year elected member of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, where he served one term as Vice President and three terms as President. He was also an elected member of the Louisiana Democratic State Central Committee for twelve years. Dr. Robinson is still an active civic participant by serving on numerous boards and civic organizations. So one of my predecessors from my district, I would like to welcome you here, and the floor is yours if you all will give him my hand.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon, everyone. I think I'm supposed to turn this way, right? I can turn this way. I want to talk. I want to talk to the people. I don't want to talk to the camera. But thank you for asking me to be here, and it's a pleasure. Unfortunately, I have not kept very close watch on the educational system once I left the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, but you're always on my mind because I recognize the fact that your job is probably one of the toughest jobs of any elected official in any capacity because you are very close to the students and the parents. And about fifty percent of the time when you do something, you make half the people mad, you make half of them happy. But that's part of the responsibility of this job. So if you understand that, then you don't get too upset when people think that you haven't done a good job. But what makes you sleep at night is when you do your very, very best every single time out to shoot, and you make a decision, and your mind just says, is this best for students? And if you can honestly answer that yes, you shouldn't have any trouble sleeping whatsoever. That doesn't mean that you're not going to make mistakes. It doesn't mean that you're not going to second-guess yourself sometimes. But I do want to tell you, don't be afraid to admit that you made a mistake, that you changed your mind because you've got new information. But you know, the thing that is always true is that people respect what they inspect. So whatever issue is before you, give it your all in terms of thinking about it because if you don't do that, then you're not going to respect that issue. The other thing is that you are part of a group that requires compromise. None of you can do anything by yourselves. You're not the school board. The school board consists of all of you together. And your officers, when they speak, whether they're speaking individually or as, as a matter of fact, an officer of the board never speaks individually. You always speak for the board. So that means that your board members must always be aware of whatever it is that you're doing, whatever ideas you have. There are no backroom cuts. There are none of that kind of stuff. They all must be up to speed at all times. If you do that, you're going to be good leaders. And you all are leaders, but you are the leaders of the leaders. And as the leaders go in the school system, so does the system. Your superintendent, your teachers are all your beehive workers. They carry out your discretion. But in the end, every, everything that you do is for the benefit of the student. Now, we can't decide who our students are, where they come from, what their backgrounds are, but it doesn't really matter. The thing that really does matter is that you understand what their backgrounds are, where they come from, what they need, and do everything in your power to see it, do it, that they get, that needed, whether it's love, tough love, a little hate sometimes, maybe, a little mama, a little papa, a little sister, a little brother, maybe even a lawyer, but always a teacher. Always a teacher. When I, I came up as a young feller, the important things to me were threefold, and that helped to form whatever it is I happen to be today. And I don't claim to be anything extraordinary, but my home, my church, and my school formed a triumphant that set the stage for whatever I might be in life. I wish we could claim that today. Unfortunately, that's not the case. That's not the case. Our homes are not doing the jobs that they used to do. Because let's say, education begins where? At home. It continues after school, at home. Kids are at home more often than they are in the playoffs. But it seems that our parents are allowing their children to decide what their activities are, when their activities are, and what they're going to do and not going to do. I can remember my, my kids used to say to me sometimes, "Well, if you do something, I'm going to call the cops." My answer to that was, "Well, I finished with you. You go right ahead and you do that." Okay? You go right ahead and you do that. But in those days, I guess, uh, our justice system was different. There was no threat that I'd go to jail if I whipped my kids. Because I tell you, I did. Matter of fact, once my son took my car and left the house, and I told him not to. Said, "Oh, well, now, that's interesting." I promptly called the police and had them pick him up. Said, "You stop him, you bring him home, and then I will take it from there." And I did. They did just that. Scared the living daylights out of him. But he never did it again. And he said to me twenty years later, "You know, Pop, man, you are hard on us, but I sure appreciate it, and I'm, I'm treating my kids the same way." Well, I don't think these kids treat, really treat our kids the same way. I don't think they're tough enough, but times change, and I understand that. But I want to talk really just another couple of minutes to the board because, as I said, you are the leaders. And the thing that you have to do, and if you haven't done this already, I might suggest that you might want to have another one of these, but only the board, just the board members. No people, no staff, no press, so that you can talk honestly to each other, learn about what makes each of you tick, and always agree that no matter what, and no matter how much you disagree, you're going to do it agreeably. No name-callings, no sharp words, just indicate that my understanding and my wants and my needs are no different than yours. I respect yours. You respect mine. And if you do that, then you will respect each other. And if you respect each other, then when you make a decision, you will know, even though you disagreed, that that decision was a decision from the heart of each of you board members. And that's what you have to do. And as I said this a little bit earlier, this is a compromise kind of thing. You just ain't going to get everything you want every time you want it. It doesn't happen that way in life. God didn't make us that way. Sometimes you're going to lose. Sometimes you're going to win. But if the student wins, then you have won. And that's the word I want to leave with you. But you got to know each other. Oh, sure, the press is going to beat you up about it, you know? They're going to see you having a private meeting. But which is more important? Sorry about that, Charles. Uh, which is more important, to be beat up by the press or to do the right things and to make a school system work that can work for our students, for our parents, for our teachers, for our administrators, and for this community? Because that's why you're here. That's why you're here. And it's not a small job. It's a very important one. I don't think there's anyone any more important than this one because you set the stage for what's going to happen to thousands of people every single day. I wish you luck in whatever you do. But if you follow those tenants that I talked about, then just remember, people respect what they inspect. And if you don't inspect each other, you won't respect each other. Thank you.
If you'll make your way back this way? Okay, as we, as we continue, um, as we continue and get into the strategic plan overview, I will now turn over the conversation to our moderator in, in whatever di- uh, direction that we're headed in. Okay, so I guess we're going straight to Ms. Okonske.
Here we go. Okay, wow. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I will try my best to be faithful to the tenants that you just challenged us to. It's a tough order to follow you, so I really appreciate your words tonight. And so what we're going to do now is we're going to transition into our strategic plan conversation. Ms. Powell?
I have a question about, do we need to log in to the computers?
And what we're going to look at tonight, you have printed in front of you, so. See, Amy is... There we go. Okay, so Ms. Powell challenged us to past, present, and future. So I'm going to try to remain faithful to that theme tonight in talking about the strategic plan. And we're going to spend a lot of time talking about the present, but we are going to take a little trip down memory lane and talk about both the immediate past and a decade ago. And then we'll, we'll jumpstart that conversation into where it may lead us into the future. So in order to understand our current situation, we have to take a trip into the immediate past. And when I looked it up on the timeline, it's amazing to me that almost three years ago to this weekend, February twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one, some of us were at Southern University for a weekend retreat with Arbinger. We were in that beautiful room overlooking the football field, and we had a two-day in-service from Mr. Mike Merchant from Arbinger. And before we could get into strategic planning conversations, we did a two-day in-service on Arbinger's outward mindset and some of their models that really guided the work of the strategic plan. So for those of you who may not have been there that day, or for those of you who would appreciate some context, I wanted to share these two slides with you, these two screenshots with you. If, in the approach that Arbinger took to our strategic planning, we spent a lot of time talking about outward mindset. When you apply outward mindset, you look outside of yourself to others. Who were those others that we're looking at? Our students, our staff, our partners, and our community. Please keep in mind this diagram and this pattern here of seeing others, adjusting our efforts, and measuring our impact. Because when you open your strategic plan, you will see that theme resonating within it. So as I said, we started on February twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one, and this, this diagram is from our friends at Arbinger, but it chronicles the process that was used to develop the current strategic plan. You'll notice as you look through the major milestones here, at every stage of the way, there was a pause for public input and for community engagement. Where we were able to, as a staff and as a board, sometimes work independently, sometimes we came together collectively, and then we would pause. We would share that work with the community, get feedback, come back, and tackle the next step of the process. This timeline in orange shows you the deliverables that went out as part of that work. Again, it started on February twentieth. The, the rough draft of the plan was pretty much solid by middle of June. I think we went to the board with a draft of that plan in June. And ultimately, I believe it was July twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-one, the board adopted the current strategic plan. So in keeping with the Arbinger theme, many of the words, many of the structures of this plan were intentional. So sometimes when people see inspiring humanity or see others adjust efforts, measure impact, where did that come from? It came from those Arbinger sessions. The Arbinger sessions were not just solely with staff or with the board. They were with the community as well. And those were the strategic themes that really became pervasive in the plan. As a, as a team, we ended up that weekend at Southern by looking, and I think Amy was at the keyboard, typing. Well, we popcorned out, if we were successful, what would it look like? This blue box is the sum total of those things from that weekend three years ago and made its way into the strategic plan. For those following at home, the strategic plan is hyperlinked in this deck, and it is on the About page of the E B R website. So our strategic plan is centered around four cornerstones. Again, that vocabulary was intentional. It was a foundational rock. Our system is built around four cornerstones we decided through our strategy sessions. Those are student achievement, exemplary customer service, operational excellence, and employee development. They became the framework of everything that we did. Everything that we did, and when we talked about strategies, when we talked about initiatives, they had to find a home within those four main areas. As you guys have seen through the course of the last three years, when we bring items to the board, everything that we do finds a home under the umbrella of these four areas. As we got into the development of the plan, the cornerstones were then paired with working groups, and I'll show you some of those in a minute. And so as staff and as board, we aligned ourselves to certain working groups to make sure that the initial plan was set. So the first working group was student achievement. If you look at the plan document in front of you, student achievement has ten K P I's, key performance indicators, where we measure our impact. We see those results as we look across others. Then there were initiatives paired with each of the cornerstones. For example, standard measures across all content areas and across all schools were adopted. Tomorrow, when Ms. Warren and I get into academics and accountability, we will share those scorecards with you, the internal and the public-facing ones that represent that initiative. Standardizing reading curriculum and supports. Our literacy blueprint is that milestone there that was launched shortly after this, and that became the framework for student achievement along with the key performance indicators. Exemplary customer service is the next two pages in the strategic plan. It services five key performance indicators, and the main goals with those five were making every point of contacting, contact, a welcoming experience, increasing family engagement, and then student recruitment plans. Under the operational excellence cornerstone, there were three key initiatives paired with five K P I's. Streamlined and efficient transportation system, safe, secure, and welcoming schools and facilities, master plan for the facilities and the property owned by the district. Employee development is the last cornerstone. The two key initiatives there were developing leaders at every level. It's tracked by K P I, the five K P I's under that cornerstone, as well as recruiting and retaining high-quality employees. Well, part of this strategic effort was to group the twenty-five K P I's, to track them internally, but to also transparently share them publicly and to update them frequently so that the public could help us adjust our efforts and measure our impact. So each cornerstone not only has two to three key initiatives, it also has a list of four to eight commitments and action. And what you'll notice when you look at the K P I's, the commitments and action are usually paired and aligned. The language is pretty similar to each K P I. So we're going to pause here, and if you look through the strategic plan, you'll notice in the second to last page, there is a part about public transparency, public reporting, and the internal work that goes on. As staff, you'll see some names. You'll see some board member names, but you'll also see some staff names on the last page. We were each assigned to initiatives, which in this strategic plan, where we convened and we facilitated the working groups that, that really did the work for these initiatives. For example, I convened the standard measures and the K P I tracking. In the very beginning, we met in person. We mapped it out. We planned the scorecard with the help of our friends from technology and from communications, and then we launched our scorecards. In the same vein, the literacy division, it was Ms. Barbara Ashley at the time. Ms. Webb, Ms. Warren took, took over. And what her Chanel's team in the literacy division has been able to do is to really codify that blueprint, push it out to the community, implement it internally with the working group, and then now we're... and then now we're able to measure results, which you'll see tomorrow when the two of us put forward some literacy data and some literacy information for you. So I'm gonna pause there to see if there's any questions about the current strategic plan before we launch into some other areas. Okay, I use my teacher wait time. Okay, so part of my charge was to take you guys through a tour of the current one to kind of reset and calibrate, but then to spark interest or to spark ideas, if we are to revisit the current plan, if we are to adjust our efforts, what might be some quick resources that we could grab to guide or complement this work? And so really, if we're looking at things that are easily and readily available to us, as a team, we've really pointed to three main areas. The first is looking at the past and present strategic plans. You can't tell where you're going if you don't know where you've been. So we have to not only look at the current one, but I've also shared with you, which we'll get into in a minute, the one that predated that one, that was launched in 2013. You also, I think, need to look at the Louisiana Department of Education. The Louisiana Department of Education does not have a strategic plan per se, but they have what they call strategic initiatives, and they have a guide and a PDF document to the community that outlines their goals and their strategic initiatives. So on the next page, I'm gonna take you through some of these things. So let's start with the past, present, and strategic plans. We've currently looked at the one that we have in front of us today, but also in front of you and linked to this deck is the one that was launched in 2013. I took an interesting tour down memory lane when I read the first page, and I would urge you to read the first page, if nothing else, of this strategic plan. Madam President challenged me to give you guys homework. I haven't given people homework in about 15 years, so I kind of got excited being a former classroom teacher. And so should you choose, one of your homework pieces may be to review the previous strategic plan from 2013. When you read the introduction, you see that it was really developed or it launched in 2010, 2011, but it didn't get published till 2013. So if you do the math and you do the history there, it started under John Dilworth's tenure. As some of you recall, Mr. Dilworth left before his contract ended. There was an interim superintendent, then when Doc, so it paused for a minute, and then when Dr. Taylor came in, it was published in 2013, in Dr. Taylor's first year in the district. So then Dr. Taylor implemented the first pieces of this plan. This was the plan that was in place in 2015, when Mr. Drake came into the district, and it is the last living strategic plan prior to the adoption of the one that the board did in July of 2022. What you'll notice is that plan really speaks to community input. There were working groups. I was not intimately involved in that, but I will tell you, my immediate supervisor was at the time, I was a director, reporting to an assistant superintendent who served on one of those working groups. As I recall it, and Mr. Smith and I took a trip down memory lane, because he and I were both directors at the time, each work group had one or two board members, paired with one or two staff members with a handful of community members, and the staff and the board co-facilitated the team with the community. And so that you'll see that there was a bold gold, gold. There were six objectives there, which really became our four cornerstones, were our four buckets. You'll see the six main buckets. You also see that those tactics really could have been translated into KPIs or measurable outcomes, even though there was no data per se in that one. You also notice that a lot of attention was played to community engagement, and the more things change, the more they stay the same. The first piece is early childhood. It's early childhood, it talks about core content mastery, and it talks about a lot of other fundamental pieces that we've been talking about recently. So I thought it was a good resource for you guys to revisit and draw back on. Again, the next piece that we could look at, should you choose homework tonight, this might be something that you choose, would be to look at the Louisiana Department of Education's website. This is the PDF graphics of their strategy overview. It's a PDF slide deck, it's about 10 slides. This is their key initiative page. Each of these is a hyperlink. Their four main buckets are access to quality early childhood, academic alignment in every school and classroom, teacher and leader preparation, and then pathways to college and career readiness. This sheet may interest some of you, because it's really how they're tracking their main metrics. They don't call them KPIs, but when you click on that sheet, you will see the metrics that they are tracking annually that pair to their initiatives. So another place that we could quickly look are two organizations in which we pay annual membership fees to. And so I'm gonna start with Cognia, the one that you may be least familiar with. Those of you who have been around for a while, Cognia was formerly known as Advanced Ed. They were bought out. Advanced Ed was formerly known as SACS, and then some other things before then. Basically, they are an international organization that accredits schools and school systems. People in the back table right now are tired of hearing me say Cognia, because we are in an accreditation review year. And so for the past 18 months, we've been doing our self-eval, we've been preparing our formal reports, and 22 days, no, 25 days ago, we submitted everything early before it was due. It's now in the hands of our reviewers. Our reviewers review those four reports and all of the data that we provided for 30 days or so. On March 13th, board leadership, a team of central office staff, will undergo the first interview. I would like to hope it's only one, time will tell. We'll do the first interview with their immediate questions upon reading our report. From there, they will dialogue and come back to us to say, hey, we're really interested in this section, we'd like to interview this team next, this team next, and whatnot. Those of you who are familiar with this process, it used to be that a team of 20 educators from around the country came to the district. Post-COVID, they've changed their protocols and practices, it's more of a desk audit now. So why is this important to strategic planning? We will receive probably by prior to July 1, a report of their findings. There are linked here for you are their key characteristics and standards. I would encourage you to take a look at them. We will receive a rating in each of their standards. It's really going to become, I think, a precursor or a needs assessment to our overall action planning for next school year, because it will be a third-party lens of where we stand now in major areas of academic content, organizational efficiency, leadership and governance, all those key things that we talk about. And again, if you just take a tour of their standards, you'll see common themes there that resonate with our strategic plan, some of the department's key initiatives, and other pieces. As a member, we have to upload all of our artifacts into their online platform. We also have access to their resources. One of their resources is strategic planning. Okay, so that there's an arm of that organization, and there are tools and templates that are already in there, because what they will do is, they will give us this report, they will tell us what our next steps are, set goals and timelines for us as to what we have to set action plans on, what we have to do better, and what evidence we have to provide when, through the course of the next five years, until there's a formal evaluation again. And so we won't know that till probably around July, but we will be in and out of that portal multiple times over the course of the next one to three to four to five years. The second resource that we have available to us is the Council of Great City Schools. And interesting enough, as members of the Council of Great City Schools, many of us as chiefs, executive directors, or department heads sit on weekly or every two week or monthly calls, depending on how they're organized, with folks just like us across the country. And so the research and data director call is really interesting, and I really appreciate the person who leads that work, because there's always best practices sharing. And so one of the things that we have access to there are their surveys when they poll each of us. And recently, they polled to ask, who are you guys using for accreditation? Who are you using for continuous improvement process? Cognia had a direct correlation with the Council of Great City Schools, because more than majority of the Council of Great City Schools, it appears, the members are using Cognia resources for continuous improvement and accreditation services. And so one of the other best practices shared with us through the council was what they're called, a portrait of a graduate. And it appears as the KPI and key performance indicators emerged on the scene in the last five or six years. Something that is now been an offshoot of that is this portrait of a graduate, where you guys as a board, where we as a team, visualize when a student walks across the stage, what do we want that diploma to represent? What mathematically, quantitative data, and qualitative do we want that diploma to represent? And then what these school districts have done is they've backwards designed that. Okay, if we want them to have an ACT score above this, with X number of advanced coursework or college credits, or a certification, whatnot, then how do we get the student there? They backwards design it out at every level. High school, then what does a middle schooler need to leave eighth grade with to get there? What does a fifth grader need to leave elementary with to get there? What does a third grader with literacy need to be able to finish elementary school, all the way down to early childhood? Okay, this is an exemplar, the link that I have here that was shared with us from Oklahoma schools through the council. There are plenty more that we can share, and honestly, if you Google portrait of a graduate, you'll see lots of things popping up there. But this is something that we've discovered through conferences and dialogues and collaborations with other member schools for the Council of Great City Schools. So as we think, and as I honor Madam President's request here for homework, what I would challenge you to do is just kind of check out some of these links. Check out the former strategic plan, the current strategic plan, the core initiatives from the department, as well as those key characteristics and those standards from Cognia. I think what you guys are gonna find is, themes are gonna emerge. There's going to be common language. There's always gonna be early childhood, there's always gonna be college and career readiness. And it helps, I think, just to define those areas of focus. And then it also validates our work, because it shows what other people out there are doing and being measured against. About eight years ago, Stacy Dupre and I had an opportunity to travel with a delegation from this district, where we did a tour of schools like none other through Ohio, and we looked at innovative high school practices. We actually got to see a high school on the campus of a medical school. We saw a high school on the campus of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. It was out-of-the-box thinking. One of the schools that we visited, though, shared a campus with General Electric. And so there were quotes everywhere and all kind of things, so that, I'm an English Lit major, so I just started reading, and so this one resonated with me and it's kind of stuck with me, from Jack Walsh, the former chairman and CEO of General Electric. He said, "Good leaders create a vision, articulate the vision, passionately own the vision, and relentlessly drive it to completion." That's what you guys are doing here now, your level setting, your vision setting. What's our mission, what's our vision, what are our core guiding principles? After you establish that, we as staff look forward to working with you to develop that plan. We want to articulate that vision and help you spread the wealth and spread the news out there. Then we will execute it together, and we'll make sure it's implemented. Then my team will get excited with you, and we get to look at the data at the end to drive it to completion and to measure the results, so we can collectively evaluate how our work is done. So it's hard to do this charge in about 30 minutes of past, present, and future, and I wanted to leave some time for Q and A. So I'll just kind of pause there, that's what I have for you tonight to kind of kick off things. But as we as staff present tomorrow, if there are certain pieces of the current strategic plan that you would like for us to talk about as we go through academics and accountability, budget and finance, and operations, let us know, and then we'll pull in those KPIs and those other pieces for you. So I'll pause there to see if questions, comments, thoughts. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, thank you so much for all of this information. My first is, do any of the working groups from the 2022 or 2021 strategic plan group, do they still meet, or is there...
So they exist in different forms than others. Probably not formally the way that it was spelled out there, because as anything else, it evolved. So for example, there are a couple of members of my standard measures group out there. Vicki was on it, and I think Shinoah had some literacy and early childhood folks on the team. We met regularly in the very beginning. Then I took it to monthly. Then I took it to a teams call, and now I take it to a collaborative online space, because once we had the standard measures mapped out, we all had our tasks, and so we didn't have to meet as frequently. I think it's the same thing with Shinoah and her team and the blueprint. Those are the two that I'm closest to the work with, because we work hand-in-hand with them to measure. So in the beginning, they were meeting regularly to map out and publish the blueprint. Now it's evolved into being ingrained, I believe she's shaking her head, into the work of the division. And so I think for a lot of us, it, A, started that way, and then it just kind of became ingrained into the work, and then ingrained until we've been meeting cross-divisional meetings every two weeks on the academic side, where all the departments come together. It becomes part of the culture there. Now, in full disclosure, anybody can read and look at those names and see some folks aren't there. And so to a varying degree, folks who have replaced them have kind of taken on those tasks and responsibilities. So when my team collects KPIs, we now know who to go to for each of those. We have data owners in each of those strategy groups. Yes, Mr. Rust?
I know that last calendar year, Arbinger had engaged the superintendent and staff on potential updates or revisions to the strategic plan, because I know that they had reached out to the board for feedback, and we had provided a couple rounds of feedback during that process. Can you tell me where the administration was in that process? Was there a contract, does that still need to be completed, or just kind of where are we at?
Sure, and thank you for that question, because I really intended on hitting that, and I didn't. So thank you. So I think it was May, about May or June, we spent a day or two with Mike Merchant and the IRC in the big room there. Actually, we spent, no, it was two weeks apart, two or three weeks apart, where we did several rounds. We jigsawed different groups, different strategy groups got back together, and we took apart the strategic plan, and we made our own suggestions. Some of the KPIs, we felt like now that we're better at some of this, and we know a little bit more, or Louisiana accountability has changed, DIBLs changed, other things, hey, we could tweak this this way. We were able to compile those notes, and those are codified, they're documented. Ms. Powell, Ms. Smith, myself, and three or four other staff members spent a couple of days with Mr. Merchant in the conference room, teasing out those themes and those notes, so we have that documentation available. Other than that, I would have to defer to council about contract or whatnot, because we did that kind of a self-study and a self-reflection ourselves with some recommended next steps and how the current one could be revised. So we do have that ready, if that's the next step in which you guys would like to go.
I guess, you know, minimum, would love for the board to see just what came out of that to help further inform...
We can most definitely do that.
What we want to do in our strategic plan.
It's all in a Google folder, we can do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
As well, have we as a district started looking at the idea of being a district that engages in the portrait of a graduate? Have you all...
No, that's something that we were exposed to over the course of the last couple of months that piqued some of our interest. We didn't know what direction was gonna go to when we met for the rewrite. And so that's something that could either be done in conjunction with this, independent of this. I would recommend doing it in conjunction, because then we don't need to be tracking different metrics. But I think that as you look at the current KPIs, some of them could be teased out to fall under that, especially when you think about those six keys as it progressed, or slightly tweaked. But I would suggest that we look at some other things out there and look at some exemplars that exist, because there's some really great stuff out there. And I know our friends at the council would be happy to share. I mean, like I said, the Cognia and the council are easy, because we already pay membership fees to them, so we have access to some of these resources already for no cost to us, or a slight cost if we end up consulting on something.
And the same thing with strategic planning?
Yes, I think both of them offer those services. Yes, sir. Sure.
It's hard for me to believe that we're in the education business and we're just deciding to maybe tinker with the portrait of a graduate. It's like Dr. Robinson said, when he stood up, he said everything about the children. But that sounds like to me, it's just been throw it up against the wall and see whatever sticks, as opposed to a portrait of a graduate.
That's a comment, not a question.
It's a comment. I said it was a comment, wasn't a question.
Yes, sir, noted.
And Coach Lewis, if I can advise, I would advise the board to go that direction. I know, Ms. Powell, Lewis, we've had that conversation. You know, what is the end result? You know, what graphic, what can we show our public? You know, what's the end result from the start to the end? And so I think that's the direction I would push this board to go.
Thank you. And I'm, I mean, that's why we sit here, that's now the direction we're going.
All right, Ms. Powell, okay, folks, homework. And so there will not be an assessment, people will not give you a test on the homework tomorrow, that much, I promise. There may be an exit ticket on the way out, but we won't give you a test on the homework. I just want to thank you guys for, I mean, this, what I shared reflects the work of many, back, both back here and not in this building tonight. So I just let, appreciate the fact that I can be the face of it, and I just would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the tedious work and the many hours that went in to the current strategic plan, and then those folks who came before us and did the first one. All right, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so I am assuming that this might be a good time for a break, and... That's correct. So we do have an interesting activity this evening. Don't forget that our child nutrition department has prepared wonderful, beautiful snacks. They did some phenomenal catering over there with mocktails. If you exit out of the library, there is, if you keep straight down the hallway, there are restrooms to your right, and I guess, maybe in a, in about five to 10? 10 minutes, okay? 10 minutes, we'll come back together for just some time for us to hang out together with our art project.